Two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Larry. Happy birthday to you.
Oh.
I'll start with the announcements while we pass out pickings. The first is a public hearing to consider a local law amending bulk pickup, which is scheduled for August 21st, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. at Village Hall. If you make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Uh, second's a public hearing to consider a local law amending the parking regulations in the village's downtown area. Also scheduled for the first hearing for August 21st, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. at Village Hall. I will make a note that we anticipate keeping that open, well, we'll definitely keep it open until September, but possibly longer because, um, we are changing about 22 pages of regulations by my count, maybe 21, um, but many, many pages. Uh, most of it's cleanup, but there are some substantive changes as well. So we want to make sure everyone understands them, uh, and we can get the, uh, the best fix to the parking regulations, which, uh, I know it's been 60 years without fixing the reassessments and Greenberg did that, but I think this might be 100 years of parking issues that we're finally addressing. So, um, we're gonna probably have multiple public hearings on that, but the first of them is August 21st, at 7:00 p.m. So I'll make a motion for that. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, next is, did you want to briefly discuss with the, uh, the bulk pickups fairly straightforward? And do you want to quickly give a little background?
Oh, Larry, actually, the bulk pickup was Larry's. I'm too busy with the.
I'm just distracted, that's all. Um, so the, uh, we've been looking for, uh, the, the board has had a request in the past about, um, having a fee implemented for bulk pickup, um, for a variety of reasons that have been recommended to the board. Um, so we are looking to, uh, implement that fee through a local law. The fee is relatively modest, probably on the order of $25 or so, whatever the board decides to set, uh, and it would be based on an individual pickup, not individual items. So not, not getting too complicated with it. So we, we're not gonna count tables and chairs and all that. We're gonna count one pickup at one time, and that's what the fee applies to.
Yeah, Pat, yeah, I think the way we view it too is not necessarily, um, you know, it's not a revenue generator. It's more, given people think about recycling, uh, reusing, that, that type of thing.
Sharing and whatnot.
Yeah.
So that's that one. Did you want to quickly do, uh, 22 pages of parking in, uh, 22 months?
No. Larry, Larry and I talked a little bit about that. To go through, to go through them one by one makes no sense. I don't just glaze over. Um, so what Larry, um, was planning to do, I guess we'll work on it together, is summarize what the, what the substantive changes are in these areas to our apartment, is that. Put that document along with the actual changes on there, um, and, and then that way people can look up their own street and, you know, see how it's affected, how it's affecting their street. In short, the regulations only, um, um, are for the downtown area, I guess, except to double parking. We keep going through and updating the thing. We have been defending this one section that said, "No double parking on like 12 streets downtown," which meant you could double park anywhere else in the village. Very cute. So, other than that, it doesn't affect the entire village. Now, you can't double park anywhere. So, um, uh, and well, as a matter of fact, you couldn't, the police weren't allowed. So, so I think those two things would be on an overall explanation that Larry's been working on, and, and then, and the law be published and, you can just, and, um, it's probably worth po- publishing both the clean version and the change. On the local law change, you show, uh, you cross out what's been eliminated, you put the new stuff in italics, so you can see what the change was over the last one. What had hap- what happened on this stuff then ended up being, I think, I think Brian said 22 pages where the clean copy was less than half of that, was much shorter. So you can see how the changes were made, but then you can also read how it'll be. So it'll, it'll be pretty, then there's some, there's some time, um, before the board's gonna vote on this second one, so plenty of time for review.
Thank you. Uh, next is a check over $25,000, um, which is a new fire chief vehicle. Um, the vendor is DeNoyer Chevrolet for 2017 Chevy Tahoe. Uh, from the capital budget, the total amount is $39,188. Uh, per our policy, expecting what everyone know. Um, then two other quick announcements that I have to add. Uh, first, today is actually the 26th, 21st anniversary of the O'Hara tragedy. Um, the O'Hara's, they, they also lost, uh, a father, a mother, and a, and a daughter, and a tragic, uh, plane accident. Um, I think the positive thing to come out of it is for the last 21 years, we've remembered them almost every day here in Irvington. Uh, the O'Hara Foundation that came out of that tragedy has been probably the most steadfast partner of the Irvington Rec Department. Uh, they've had many events of their own, um, that they posted. We've, uh, we also have, you know, O'Hara Nature Center, which bears their name after a large donation. So, a lot of great has come out of something that was so tragic 21 years ago today. In some ways, it seems much, you know, it doesn't seem like 21 years to me, that's for sure, but, uh, we just wanna have a quick remembrance of that today.
Finally, let me just add that, um, quite a number of residents have also given a lot of their time and their effort as part of the O'Hara Foundation to honor them. Um, you know, people spend a lot of time volunteering, um, through, through a number of the initiatives, not just the O'Hara Nature Center, uh, the basketball tournaments, and a lot of things that are behind the scenes. Uh, so again, a compliment to our resident volunteers as well.
Absolutely.
And my last announcement is that, um, Rocktoberfest is back on this year. It's on, um, October 14th, and, uh, Joe Artino and me, we're, we're kind of reorganizing face at the same time. So, uh, Joe actually raised his hand and said that he'd be willing to chair it to keep things moving. Um, we're probably about a month behind schedule, uh, but we're catching up quickly now, so we have, expect another great day down in Mathson Park. Uh, same kind of schedule as before, you know, 2:00 p.m. to about 9:00 p.m., bunch of bands, uh, bunch of food carts, food trucks, um, as well as, uh, you know, beer from local breweries and that sort of thing. So, should be another great day, but, uh, just wanted to quickly give an update on that as well.
And to mention, I think, I believe today was, maybe it was yesterday, World Emoji Day?
I, I did not know that.
See, that was Dan's. It's world.
Emoji Day.
It's world, okay, very important.
Uh, the most interesting thing I saw was someone, uh, one of the museums was tweeting out, um, descriptions of artwork using, you know, or artists using just emojis to describe the work, which is, I guess, fun.
There's so many, I don't even know what they stand for, all the different faces.
I should never find the one I want.
No, exactly. There's too many now. That's all I have to announce, so nothing else is anything. Otherwise, I'll move on to correspondence. Of the six pieces of correspondence, five of them for leaf blowers, so I will hold them over, uh, until we get to the leaf blower, uh, public hearing. Um, but I will read the other one, which was Tom Jackson's letter. Um, "Dear Mayor Smith, members of the board, as you may know, since late November, our board has only had two members," the, uh, this is regarding Environmental Conservation Board. "As you may know, since late November, our board has only had two members. We wrote to the mayor and correspond with Larry Schalford, request that the vacancies on our board be filled. Larry wrote us in December that the full board trustees was aware of the issue and was trying to address it, but had no immediate solutions. We have convened every month since as a two-member board. It is apparent that with only two members, we cannot function effectively as a volunteer board. Both members need to be present to constitute a quorum. If one member is unavailable, we cannot convene. In the past, having a larger board provide an opportunity to change differing points of view among the members and draw upon their knowledge and expertise. Although our board may have had, although our board may have had nine members, we found that we could function effectively with five. Each, each of us, as you know, has been a volunteer for the village for well over 30 years. The board's made significant contributions and has an important role in the planning process. We believe it is important that the board continues to fill that role. For now, we will need to suspend until, until at least two or three appointments are made to fill the vacancies. We hope that you will, this will occur in the near future. Very truly yours, Thomas G. Jackson, Chair, Irvington Environmental Conservation Board." Um, I think we're planning on maybe having them in to discuss it, or we're, we're working on a plan, um, whether it's gonna be the same board or, or a different board when we come out of the, the plan, uh, that's to be determined, but, um, we are aware of it and we are working on it. Uh, so I will move to public comment that isn't related to any of the, to the public hearing. If anybody has anything?
I'm Grandpa Webber, and we have two out-of-towners here. I'm Kevin from, uh, Joffrey Park, and this is Ryan.
Just say hello. Say hello, Grandma.
Hello, Grandma.
So these are Connie's two of Connie's five grandchildren.
You're welcome.
Right. Thank you for participating in public comment.
For the record.
For the record.
Any additional public comment? Any other relatives who'd like to say hello?
What does Connie really like?
Um, consent agenda. Have any, have anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Bye, guys.
Does it protest the consent agenda?
Well, that's, uh, that's Hannah, that's, uh...
Oh, great, yes.
Yeah.
She doesn't deserve a mention of her.
Yeah, but she lives here.
We're not related by blood.
That's lovely Kate Hannah, Michael Hannah's daughter.
That's my queer sister. I normally like it.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda in Larry's birthday wishes. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye, whatever.
Next, we'll, uh, reconvene the public hearing to consider a local law amending the village code to provide the appeals from Architectural Review Board decisions are made to, no, this is, this is new. Yeah, I will make a motion to open the public hearing to consider a local law amending the village code to provide that appeals from the Architectural Review Board decisions are made to board trustees. Can I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's, uh, public hearing's now open. Would you want to give a little background on this?
Well, that's about it. Um, right now, um, ARB decisions, um, except, uh, regarding demolitions in the historic district, go to the, uh, zoning board of appeals. Uh, and the board, when it was, um, consuming historic district, thought about making all appeals relating to the historic district come to the board of, um, uh, trustees, because you just enacted the design guide and that way you can keep, and then, and then it just seemed to make sense that, uh, ZBA chairperson suggested, and it makes sense to the board, then, then just have all appeals from the ARB come to the board trustees. There aren't many, there aren't, there aren't many appeals from the ARB. Usually, you know, usually things work out, but, I mean, I'd be surprised if there were more than a couple a year. So, so it means that you're not changing, um, the work of the ZBA very much, you're not increasing the work very much. Mary Ann, have you heard?
I mean, that's basically it. We, I did correspond, um, at your request with the zoning board, uh, members of the zoning board, and, um, they did ask for just the rationale behind this, which I think Mary Ann basically summarized, which is, you know, since the appeals, the, the board felt it necessary and important for them to keep the appeals from decisions involving the historic district, uh, to your board, that, you know, given that stance, it made sense to be consistent and have all appeals go to you. So, it's, it's easier for the applicant, frankly.
And then, the, the, um, amendment also says what the, you know, what, what, what the procedure is, and the, um, Board of Appeals will have a public hearing on it, and what the notices and stuff.
And it's me, I, I honestly, I didn't think of taking all of them, just because that never changed, but once the, you know, the zoning board chair suggested, and we thought about it, seemed to make sense, because I think a lot of the time, the, the ARB, we have our ARB chair here, um, it isn't as black and white as, as they say some planning things, where there's kind of like, you know, it, it, there's, there's, to me, more subjectivity to some of the ARB things, and I think it's more appropriate that, not that the VOT is necessarily softer, but in my opinion, it kind of is. It's not as black and white. It doesn't, we don't refer back just to the law, but, you know, it, it's, it's kind of the spirit of it and the totality of things, and, you know, I think the historic district, um, guidelines is a great example, where you have to really weigh costs with historic district preservation. There's a lot of things that you can't necessarily quantify in a, in a law, that you can always point to and say, you know, you, they upheld the law, you didn't uphold the law, there's, there's just too many moving parts for that. So it's, it's just more subjective, I think, on the appeal, where the ARB, and the deal's much more in black and white.
The ARB.
I mean, ZBA, not the ARB. No, ZBA, sorry.
I mean, that's exactly what I had. The ZBA's really, for the most part, are things like, uh, you know, coverage and, uh, setback and variances, so they're very quantitative, although there may be some aspects to it that are, in fact, uh, interpretive in terms of judgments as to the impact of such things. But, like you say, a lot of the other, a lot of stuff, uh, that the ARB is dealing with is, for want of a better word, more subjective, or has a different set of criteria, and so I think that's important.
And I think a lot of the criteria is set by, you know, the board trustees. I mean, again, historic district is the most recent example, but it's kind of the spirit of the law as well as the, you know, the actual fact of the law.
And the solar panels too.
Solar panels as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think the key thing here is that in the discussion about the historic design guide, you were, as a board, you were very clear that you intended it to be used a certain way, so clear that you made a very elaborate resolution, which will appear in the front of the design guide. So you want to make sure that it's being used the right way, and one of the ways that you can monitor that is by receiving the appeals from that. So if you start to see a trend of it not being used as intended, or, I mean, I'm just making this stuff up, but you can be close to the issue and be monitoring that very closely. So once you made, you took that stance, then it just makes sense for the applicant or anyone who may appeal to have one place to go, rather than this kind of fractured, um, fractured process. So that was, that was really where a lot of this came.
Anyone else up here, or should we open it up to the public?
I'm totally comfortable with this, um, appeal situation for the change that we're proposing. Um, it's actually been discussed for a while. Um, it's not just a spur-of-the-moment kind of thing, so, um, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm very happy to hear anybody from the community, but I certainly, at this point, feel supportive of passing the resolution.
Anyone from the public like to speak about this issue? And we, we didn't hear back from anyone in the ZBA.
There's no response.
Sad to lose their.
I assume the ARB is, is...
Yeah, I mean, I discussed it with them, we had no negative feedback from any of the members.
That's, that's...
So if there's no further, or any public comment, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I will, uh, make a motion to appear. Do I have a, uh, resolution?
Resolution. Where is? Let's see, what page is it?
Okay. I'll make a motion to, to amend the village code to provide that appeals from the ARB decisions are to be made to the board of trustees. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I was like, uh-oh, I've lost it before. Do we have anything about when it's effective or anything, or just what's filed with the state?
I couldn't, I can't find the page of it in here, but maybe there's so many pages here.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
This wasn't a, uh, I don't think we have one necessarily for the, uh, for the, uh, the leaf blowers.
Capital budget, that was...
You can make it up.
No, um, isn't this it?
"Amend the village code to provide that appeals from ARB decisions are..."
Yeah, but it's not like an actual amendment, like, uh, it's like a...
Oh, sorry, resolution.
Oh, yes, here it is, okay. But I don't see the resolution, this is the whole thing.
There isn't one.
Oh, I did.
You did it. We're done. Uh, we will, we will continue, it was your birthday, you're all striking. Uh, we're continuing the public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 148 nuisances of the Irvington Code to limit the least use of leaf blowers.
So we're done with the other one, right?
Yes, we voted, and we're good. So, the public hearing is, is still open. Uh, I think we've now publicly spoken about this one. I can't even count the amount of meetings, a half dozen at least, I'd say. Uh, we've, we've had, received a fair amount of feedback. Uh, I'd say not even a fair amount, I'd say a, a great amount of feedback, uh, both verbal, written, email, um, I guess those are pretty much, which we got the feedback. Uh, you know, as I've said in the past, I think we've succeeded in making no one completely happy, um, and we've taken a big step forward, I think, towards limiting the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Uh, I think we have two come up, kind of polar opposites, and some people want to be able to use whatever they want to use, and some people want to have a complete ban on any gas-powered devices, period. Um, I think we've tried to find something, someone in the middle. Uh, we look at it as a starting ground. We can go either way from here. We, we're gonna see how it works. Um, you know, trying to make everyone happy was impossible, so we tried to do what we thought was best while, you know, kind of, uh, trying to limit bad behavior, uh, while allowing the good behavior, that people have behaved well to continue, um, and we'll see how it works. I mean, I think that that's, that's the, uh, that's my, that, our goal was to get something enacted. Uh, it's taken much longer than we thought. I think because we're listening, we're trying to be responsive to all of the, um, comments that we've received, some of them, you know, diametrically opposed, uh, which is, obviously makes it hard, and it's not just a minority on either side. I think there's a, a large group on, on all sides of this issue. Um, I think the way leaf blowers are used is very different. Um, so I think we've tried to strike a balance over the last several months, um, and, you know, this is, this has been years in the works, but in the last several months that we've focused on it, I think we've, we've made the law a lot better, uh, a lot more fair to everyone, uh, and we'll see how it works. You know, it's, uh, I don't think we expected to be perfect out of the gate, but I do think, uh, we think it's gonna be a, a pretty decent solution for everyone.
Yeah, um, Ryan, did you want me to go over the tweaks that were made since the last version?
Sure.
It, it wasn't really changed much from the version everybody saw, and we discussed at the last meeting. Just a couple of little, mainly clarifications. Um, it, it was the, the most, I don't know, most significant, that the provision that says it gives the, um, dates of the spring and fall cleanup periods, that you can use them from 8 to 5, that's in there, but it wasn't entirely clear that the, um, on the one or two family properties, that you could also, during the spring cleanup, use it during those hours, and the same thing with, in the multifamily houses. So, um, a clause was added, sort of clause, yeah, a clause was added to each of them, saying in addition to the spring and fall cleanup, cleanups permitted by paragraph one involve, I want a two-family, you can, um, use a leaf blower, you know, 30, for 30 minutes. And then, um, same thing on the multifamily, so that was added to the beginning of each of them. And then, um, on the, the very last subsection on the gas-powered leaf blowers, it, it did say before that it had to be operated in accordance with manufacturer's instructions and specs. We had it hand-maintained, so that it's operated and maintained in accordance with them. And then, um, um, there was general discussion of a, of a noise level without any numbers put in, um, but, so we put in some numbers. So for handheld or backpack leaf blowers, must operate at a noise level of 70 decibels or less until December 31st, 2018, after which time the noise level shall be 65 decibels according to the ANSI standards.
Um, I do have four pieces of correspondence, um, that I will read now. First is from Kathy Byfield. "I just got back from a short trip and learned that the work session for leaf blower ban has been pro landscaper and that the pre-draft, it dates May 15th, September 15th, they're up for reconsideration. Hope this is not the case, as appears the board is considering the livelihood of landscapers over their own, their own taxpaying citizens. My husband and I are both filmmakers, filmmakers and professional TV editors. Perhaps it's time I made a video to share on social media of what daily life is here, of what daily life here in Sparrow Park has become like. Subtitled my, subtiting my five-year-old in his own yard, because you can't hear over the noise, might just be a more powerful image than pleading with the board again and again. Is 100% not fair that we have to put up with this air and noise pollution during the very times when people are outside the most, April, May, September, October? Anything that dates of the ban should be changed to include all of May and September. Again, they are the two nicest months of the year. I hope the board is not, does the right thing tonight and protects the kids in our village, not the welfare of greedy landscapers who can purchase the electric blowers or race. Becoming further discouraged and appalled, I'm having to take this case to what I thought was a progressive neighborhood. Once again, leaf blowers cause hearing loss in children, to be clear. If we're not gonna ban these machines, the board is putting leafless yards over the safety of our kids. Sincerely, Kathy Byfield." Um, next is from Caesar Manfredi. "What appears to be the latest version of the new leaf blower rules has an expiration of December 31st, 2018, for an exemption that would be useful to Half Moon South co-ops after storms, when the cleaning of sidewalks is a matter of public safety. Earlier versions did not have this expiration date. Why is there a need for the expiration? The need to clean the over one mile of sidewalks will not change to December 31st, 2018. The alternate for cleaning sidewalks will be running the power lawnmower tractor over the sidewalks. Such an alternative, alternative would be more noisy with a bigger engine for a longer period of time, since they move slower. In summary, the expiration of 20, of December 31st, 2018 accomplishes nothing positive except more noise, more labor, less of a clean sidewalk, and a less safety for the co-op. Keep in mind that the issue is the sidewalks and public safety, not the lawns and driveways. So take out the expiration date and the time restrictions, but limit the use to sidewalks and public safety, make the exemption paragraph. Thank you for your further considerations, Caesar Manfredi, President of Half Moon South Co-op." Um, then Rick Rizzulo in a related email says, "For what it's worth, I agree with Caesar. To explore this, to expire this exemption will truly jeopardize public safety in the future for hundreds of families in Irvington. This exemption will affect all residents living in co-ops condos and all multifamily communities throughout the village. Please reconsider the expiration and allow, and allow limited use on sidewalks in instances of public safety. Thanks for consideration, Rick Rizzulo, President of 120 North Broadway Tenants Court." Um, and then Warwick Norton, um, writes, "If the national standard is, is ANSI 175 dot two, then I believe very few of any gas-powered blowers available on the market will be below 65 decibels. Example, none of the current still range." So effectively, you're banning all gas leaf blowers. "It should also be noted that gas-powered leaf blowers are also above this noise level, so should be banned also. I don't understand what's the difference between myself and my contractor using a leaf blower. I have an issue at this time of year, squirrels making a mess of my driveway from eating pine cones. This is a minimal job to clean up, 10 minutes, and much easier done by my contractor than on a leaf blower. Please explain the reasoning regards, Norwood Norton." Um, and then the last one is from Stephanie Hardy. Um, she mentioned my quote, "I think we've succeeded in making no one happy with this bill. It's not surprising, different parties have different values, yard services, most of which employ no Irvington residents, want speed, efficiency, and most useful tools. Residents want peace and quiet, and homeowners which are residents will want good-looking, greenery, and affordable price. Like many fellow early residents, I work at home. I estimate the power equipment is in use nearby, close enough to distract and annoy, raises about 300 yards, of 40 to 50% of the 40-hour work week, and often on Saturday. It's a lot of noise, noise that's unavoidable even indoors. Noise so bad that people can't sit outside and make a phone call. Let's call it what it is, noise pollution." Um, uh, talks about fumes. Um, "Before we write regulations, we need to agree on some community values. We dedicate an effective organization like the planning board and architecture review boards. Check to build's character and visual attractiveness. Zoning regulations protect the same common interest. No underlying ideas that protecting a common interest sometimes requires individual property owners to compromise. Irving is a community..." My point is that we all enjoy and usually endorse activities that support community values, because we perceive them as integral to our personal and community interest. It's a lot of commitment, um, to preserving our visual character. We should begin with a discussion of what audible character we want for Irvington. We cherish our views of the river, and write regulations to protect views. We cherish peace and quiet, and so let's regulate promoting that. This is another instance, this is about quality of life and support. Remember that those interested in quality of life are commercial interests, trying to complete their work as efficiently as possible, but it's not impossible to do their work without power equipment, just less convenient for them." Talks about dividing the neighborhood into, he talks about dividing neighborhoods into broad neighborhoods, maybe eight, limit the use of power equipment to twelve hours per week, three, four-hour slots. Current proposals have a nine-to-five orientation, that's too broad, especially bringing noise pollution all day, every day. "There are some who think that the number of blowers in use at one time as a property should be limited to one. My view is that more are better. Yes, the volume is greater, but the duration is shorter, for a half-hour nonstop noise or louder for ten minutes, I'm for the latter. We changed that to two, by the way. Finally, no regulation is useful unless it's enforcement. Self-regulation doesn't go so far. All we get in property owners' revise their lawn service is a start, but people in the village will ultimately need to be the eyes and ears, which could create tension if neighbors report neighbors. Do we need a hotline, a web form? Unlike zoning regulations, the waste is here only one minute and gone the next. There won't be proof of a violation other than the personal statement. And who in village government will be responsible for tracking down and finding violators? Need good regulations, but a specific enforcement plan may be even more important. Closing, let's favor re-establishing a comfortable audio character in the village. Tempting to think about the details, but the bigger question is what we want for ourselves, how we restore the character. We've already lost a commercial interest. We've all lived without power blowers twenty-five years ago. We could live without them again." According to Rick Regulate, Stephen Hardy. And those are the letters we have. As far as responding to them briefly, the ANSI standard, we have raised it to seventy, and then have it, you know, going down, you know, later on. I think our thought process there is they can upgrade to better equipment, or, you know, we think a lot of people might move over to electric as well.
And the other thing is that these things don't usually last that long. Leaf blowers aren't, you know, three years and years, so the gases and things being used now probably need to be replaced by the end of 2018 anyway.
As far as Caesar and Rick's emails, I mean, I don't think we want to ever compromise public safety for this. I think that as we try this, we'll see if they can use either electric. We do have the exemption for emergencies, if there is a storm, you know, so I'm hoping that there's a workable solution that can be found between the contractors, between the supers of the buildings. And if not, you know, our meetings are always open, so we can, we can revisit that again. You open up some public comments? Anybody else have something else now, or just public comment? Please.
My name is Jeffrey Chester. I'm a member of the Board of Managers at Downingwood Condominiums, and I have a letter prepared by a lawyer who's also a member of our Board of Managers. "On behalf of the hundred and fifteen unit owners and residents of the Downingwood and Irvington complex, we desire to protest the proposed local law regarding use of gas-powered leaf-sledge snow blowers. It appears to us the village has inappropriately singled out condominiums, restricting use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Such use within our condominium is tantamount to the similar use at tennis courts and golf clubs. In each of these cases, the nature of the entity is such that neighboring residents not affiliated with the condominium would not be affected adversely by the use of such gas-powered blowers. Our condominium, as well as others, is a multi-acre, actually it's thirty-five acres, development that does not, as a rule, border upon private homes. Most of Downingwood has buffer space or woodland at its borders. We believe in amendment to the local law as an order. It appears prejudicial to single out condominiums while providing greater use by single-family dwellings. Clearly logic and experience dictate that single-family dwellings are more likely to interfere noise-wise with their neighbors than a condominium that is naturally buffered from the rest of the area. We accordingly request that the local law be amended or not approved in its present form. Sincerely, Downingwood Board of Managers." I'd like to offer this letter to the village board.
Please. Anyone else? Please.
Good evening, Timmy Downey from Hastings, New York, also a local landscape contractor. I've only heard this evening, and I'll take the time to fully read the newest version or the final version that you're considering. I'm in favor of what you're doing, by and large. The only thing I'd like to see spoken differently about this is to stop pointing the finger at a device called a blower. I'd like to hear, since it wasn't expressed this evening, what the village may be doing in terms of the conversation that was had regarding registering contractors, and trying to do the educational process. I think the full court press has to be applied to not only the contractors, the users, homeowners who use the equipment, but homeowners or associations that employ services. There has to be a broad educational effort put forth where we change the conduct of those individuals who are out there, the labor force, using these machines. It is never the machine that is the problem, no more than it is the, when we, there was consideration of people who use alcohol inappropriately and get behind the wheel of a car. They don't say it's an alcohol problem, they say it's an individual responsibility problem. Same as in this case here, we have to examine the people, the labor force that are using machines. Their comment earlier of, these machines weren't used twenty-five years ago is inaccurate. As many of the statements I hear from people who do not do this work, who just do a little research online, and then have their opinions, and they try and broad-brush it like it's fact, more often than not, they're absolutely wrong in terms of how they express their opinions. But I'd like to see the sides come together to have a more civil, well-mannered community, because I agree, it's out of control with the way these machines are used. I'd like to hear that, if it's possible, if the board can respond, are they still going to do that effort to do the educational process and to try and change the conduct of the people who are using this piece of equipment? Because again, if we don't address that, you have mayhem in the spring, you have mayhem in the fall, and from the homeowner's perspective, or the property owner's perspective, there should be understanding that we don't have to blow every little petal of grass or leaf across our property. Just clear the sidewalks, make them safe, clear the driveways, make them presentable, the front stoop, and let the rest be. There has to be a change in how this is defined. Thank you for your time and listening to my comments.
We couldn't agree more. We actually have our first draft of the legislative draft to start registration process for landscapers. We have a draft card that we're going to be handing out. There's going to be a whole bunch of, well, there'll be several, at least, informational, educational things they have to sign off on before they're going to get their permits. The permit fee is going to be very low. Again, this isn't a revenue generator, this is more of a educational tool, and, you know, to have something that we can kind of, you know, hold over them if they don't behave well. Because I do think that, I will say actually a hundred percent of the complaints we receive are about landscapers, not about individual homeowners. And it's, I don't think it's ironically, but that includes people at condominium complexes, people at co-op complexes as well, that are complaining that they felt like they're trapped by their co-ops and their condo boards, that this is the way that their landscaper said they have to do it, and that's the way they do it. You know, I actually think that if the landscapers had been behaving themselves, we'd never even heard about this, because I agree with you, it can be a five-minute shot, it's quick, it's easy. It's just when you see them go from place to place to place, they, you know, they have four houses on one side of the street, they go around them. I think they can just do it a lot smarter in a lot shorter amount of time, and they don't have to blow every single leaf of grass, as you say. So I think that's, a big part of this is going to be education, because there is still a lot of time where leaf blowers could be gas-powered or otherwise could be used. So, you know, I think it has to come down to changing behavior, just like it does for a lot of things, like the slowdown in Irvington, all those things. So that is the big second phase of this. The reason that this came before the registration is simply because we want to get something on the books before this period closes. We hoped to get this done, you know, in June, but we had to keep tweaking it, you know, as we kind of received more and more comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor and Board, I'd be happy to be available if any way I can provide any help or support in terms of the wording and drafting of this, as I did years ago with trustee Gillland with the whole Love and Leaving program, for my assistance in any fashion I can to help create a dialogue that connects the interests of both parties.
And we've so far had a positive response from several landscapers that kind of say, we're the good guys here, and we think it's a, you know, small group of kind of, you know, bad actors. So I think that that was very positive to me. I thought there'd be a lot of pushback from the landscaping community, and there's not. So I think that's all positive, and I think that that's an important next step, and we plan to act on that as soon as possible as well. Who's next? Please.
My name is Charlotte Isler. I'm here basically for some clarification. I wasn't able to be there. You had the working meetings, which I know you had. So what isn't quite clear to me is, you speak of leaf blowers. Does any of this refer to cutting grass regularly, which is also done with gas blow machines? Does it affect those?
It does not, it's not now, just leaf blowers.
So that if, like myself, I have somebody come once a week, they're never here more than half an hour, that it's okay to come during the hours requested? And then I understood there was going to be a change from gas blowers to electric blowers that is not being implemented at this time, is that correct?
There's never a ban on electric. You can use electric?
Yes, but I mean, there's no ban on the gas.
There's no outright ban right now.
So they are permitted for the time being, and...
Within the windows.
Yeah. Within the limits of the law.
Okay, and so basically, I think this refers more to bigger contractors who work in larger developments.
Not really. For a certain period of time, they're not allowed to use leaf blowers. They can use, they can use all their other equipment, other than gas-powered leaf blowers. They can use electric leaf blowers, they can use lawnmowers, they can use edgers, they could, you know, there's...
But my gardeners can use the gas, the gas-powered?
Not during, not during the date specified. Basically, in the summer months, they cannot use gas-powered leaf blowers. They can use electric leaf blowers, and they can use them during the spring cleanup and the fall cleanup, but not during the summer.
And that applies to grass cutting as well?
No, grass cutting's fine, only leaf blowers, only electric, only, only gas-powered leaf blowers. Everything else is fine.
Okay, that's true.
Anybody else? I mean, we've heard from dozens of people on this through the month-long process. You know, again, I hope we got it eighty percent right, because I think we've done a good job. You know, I think for the larger properties, Downingwood and Fieldpoint have both raised the same concern. You know, it's not, it's not that, you know, you just have to, I think you're just going to have to change the way, at least in the beginning, how you're going to look at this process. Talk to your contractors. If you, if it turns out that it's impossible to keep your, your complexes clean, and, you know, your people are worried about falling on sidewalks and things like that, we'll be happy to deal with it. Again, this isn't, it isn't like we passed the law and it's going to be gone. We can always, we can always reexamine it. But I think that, you know, we feel like we have to get, we feel like we want something on the books to address the overall noise issues. You know, there's not, our window's closing here rapidly, it's almost the fall cleanup. So, you know, I think that, you know, while we definitely hear what you're saying, you know, I personally, I think we can still move forward this time with the law. And I think I'm happy to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I think that I've heard that's worth considering, and I've thought about it quite a bit, but I don't see how it actually works out better, is the idea of having neighborhood zones, you know, it's like there's recycling zones in the village. But I think that that result is that it actually doesn't solve the problem, it just creates it, shifts it, because you're still going to have, you know, if you have to, let's say Sparrow Park allow two times a week where it's used, you know, I'm not sure, for three, four hours, I'm not sure if that's really going to be any different than...
Where is that?
Yeah, because you normally have one landscaper coming in and handling like a half a block of properties all in one time, because they've come to the neighborhood, they go through it, so they're actually going to be working for two to three hours in that neighborhood, so it's effectively the same thing. It's just a question of, I guess, how you draw those boundaries, if you can fragment it well enough to, but it just seems, I can't figure out how you would actually, quite how you would implement it, and how you would analyze it to implement it properly.
Yeah, I think it would take a lot more thought. You know, if this doesn't work, maybe we can examine that, but...
It's the edge between the, yeah, between the discussion.
Where the non-smoking area ends?
I agree with Mark's comment. There are a lot of good, that idea, there were a lot of good ideas that came out of the public through this whole process, and I think it also highlighted the whole issue of noise pollution. That's a, that's a pretty important issue. It's a very important issue. We talk about visual, you know, preserving visual things, but, you know, I think that awareness will move us to first, as the mayor said, we are moving forward with this registration, and the component of that that's educational is a really important piece. I think what Mark has done, you know, you'll all see some versions of a little card, an education piece about courtesy and common sense can go a long way. So that's an important piece, but, I mean, I've said this for nine years, the enemy of the good is the perfect. So if we try to craft this for another five months to make this first step perfect, I think, you know, we'll just drive ourselves crazy in the public. Nobody will be happy with that either. So I'm, I'm happy with moving forward. I know we've talked about it for a long time.
I agree. I think that there's a point where making, trying to make sure we've captured every possible thought and every possible comment becomes a little bit like chasing the last leaf down the driveway with a leaf blower. We knew when we started this, this was not going to be perfect. I think we've listened carefully to all the comments, and I think the mayor has said over and over again, this is not something that can't be revisited, of course we can't. The idea is, there was a wonderful op-ed piece in last Saturday's Times called, "What Local Government Is About," is about what we owe each other. And we all live here together, and there are different interests, and there are sometimes competing interests, and how do we do our best to balance it, knowing that we can't achieve perfection? This is a really good shot, and I think we should go forward with it and not wait any longer.
I would just add that I think that we've made a big dent in slowing down the usage, you know, compared to what we had before, which was nothing, limiting the amount of time and amount of, numbers of leaf blowers which can be used. You know, it's my hope that by our sunset date of December 31st of 18, that we'll have seen a change in behavior, both on the part of the contractors in how they use their leaf blowers, perhaps on the part of homeowners and what they want from their lawns, and, you know, how they want their lawns to look, and hopefully an improvement in battery-operated leaf blowers, which will allow us to perhaps have a total ban by 2031. So when we review this...
Yeah, and I will add that while we're, I'd say kind of, we're definitely not new to this idea. Several of our neighbors have had these for years, and, you know, they've been able to figure it out, their landscapers have continued to figure it out. I will add that Greenberg, and I don't know if it's always good to have Greenberg do what you do, but Greenberg is looking to use our law as their model law, because I think we did kind of try to find that compromise, because again, they have the same groups of opposed folks, so. But, you know, I think that, you know, if the contractors can't figure it out, they can talk to someone who's, you know, Hastings has had a ban for a while, I doubt, I doubt very, has a ban.
A more stringent ban, actually.
Yes, some of them are a lot more, a lot, a lot more strict, so.
Just so you understand, in those communities that you're prefacing with the ban, blowers are used every day, every day of the week, they just do it more carefully, more responsibly. It's impossible to maintain properties for a three-month period without the use of it on a driveway or walkway and so forth. So when you're referencing other communities, it's not like they're not using it, they're using it every single day, everyone plays hide and seek.
Breaking the law, yes.
Yeah, it's, it says it.
Well, I would say again, you know, what really has, you know, come to my attention, and I actually have a serious hearing loss myself, it wasn't caused by, by leaf blowers, but the idea of noise pollution in general, and the quality of life, I think we've really just begun to look at what effect that has on all the people that now work at home, and it's, it's something that I hope we pay attention to as we go forward, I think we will.
I just want to say one thing, it's important to make a nod also to the other kinds of pollution that are caused, not just, you know, there is particulate pollution caused by the gas engines that can cause, you know, have been shown to cause asthma conditions in children, but also you have the problem in some studies, and you have the problem of just the use of it kicking up a lot of dirt and surface material off of garden beds or whatever, off of pavement, and that also creates a vector for asthma.
Yeah, yeah, I realize that, yeah, I think like six or seven years I've been reading about all that affecting the asthma and all that, and I fully agree that there's a special place for leaf blowers as problematic, but it has brought to mind the broader question of noise, not just with landscapers, but noise overall. So that's a very big, not that we can solve that.
That we can solve that today.
No, and we're certainly not going to try. Besides, it's Larry's birthday.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, but a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to Chapter 148 Usances of the Irvington Code to Limit the Use of Leaf Blowers. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks everyone for their, yeah, I think the one thing I should have mentioned before we could close the hearing was I was very impressed with the civil tone of the, and the intelligence of the correspondence, the, you know, the people that showed up to express their opinion either way. You know, I think it was a great example of the way things should be done. You know, we didn't have... way things should be done. You know, we didn't have name-calling, we didn't have hyperbole, we just had kind of people trying to figure out the right answer. We had some hyperbole.
Passion, passion.
You know, I think we, again, we came to a compromise, and we'll see if it works. And if it didn't, we'll work on it.
I agree. One thing about that, though, there were too many long and well-potted and well-recent letters that came in very late in this process. We've been on this for months. And so, to get a piece of correspondence that says, "I just heard about this," and just six pages of what I think you should do, you know, really, people, get on the mailing list. It's not hard.
And if we're, we're really, if there's other ways to be reached, we're happy, we're open to those suggestions as well, because it's the thing we struggle with the most. You know, we get, no matter how many weeks, months, we talk about things, and so we're always accused of trying to sneak something by us.
Maybe we should do Morse code using the fire alarm. Everyone hears that.
Stop bringing that up, please.
I'm a voice pusher.
Next is voluntary appointments to the Irvington Woods Committee. Any discussion here?
No.
Otherwise, we resolve to appoint the following members to the Irvington Woods Committee for term expired December 2017: Eric Fenterstock, Catherine Kane, Kimberly Michigan, Leslie Siri, Terry Tosi, and Josh Sletter. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will add that Joe is absolutely glowing in his praise for the Irvington Woods Committee, what a pleasure they are to deal with, and what a great job they're doing. So, thank you to those members.
One, two, three, four, five, six people stepping up.
Yeah, I assume there's a lot more on the committee, so thank you to all of you.
Yes, do.
Next is approval of contract 201714 with Bar Down Studio for Architectural Services.
Great name.
So, the contract that you had in front of you is, and one that was published on Friday, was replaced. This is contract for architectural services for two sets of repairs over at the Irvington Firehouse. One is for roof replacement, and the other is for window replacement. And these are the pair, bid-level documents to move forward with that project, those projects. The replacement here is that the, at the end of last week, the, it was determined that the roofing material has asbestos, which is not uncommon. But, in order to proceed, we need to have a set of specifications prepared by a certified, a person certified to prepare such specifications for the removal of the asbestos. And so, that increased the proposal about 13, a little over $13,000. So, it's a cost of doing business, but we do have money set aside for the design and the repairs over there, but this slows us down and costs us a little more.
Yeah, I'm very glad we're getting this worked out. I was actually just talking to some of the firefighters about this, and they were kind of asking what's going on with kind of the, you know, the window replacement and things like that. You know, I think we had hoped, you know, in a perfect world, we would be talking about a large renovation and getting it up to kind of current acceptable levels for fire departments. But when our consultant came back and it was, you know, a one-year's worth of annual budget just to get it not even all the way up to code, it didn't really make sense. You know, $15 million to not get you what you want doesn't make sense. So, in the interim, I think we have to do something with the windows and the roof. The roof is actually leaking, and we've had to make, you know, temporary repairs, and the windows are just, you know, just old. And they're leaking, so. Well, this is a good step, Larry. Do you have any questions on this, or?
But this is, I give you, this is bid level, right? You don't know what the project is gonna run.
No, no.
That'll be developed as we go along. We resolve to approve contract 201714 with Bar Down Studio for Architectural Services for the renovation of the existing fire department building located at 90 Main Street. Authorizing the Village Administrator to execute said proposal. I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I mean, I assume these people can, could recommend this.
Thank you. Give me a coffee?
Firehouse.
No.
Thank you.
Make a mess.
The approval of the award of contract 201712 for joint paving.
Okay, so the, this is something that both of you have been on board for some time, though, that we've been involved with bidding out our paving work jointly with the other villages in Greenberg. This is an effort that has, as I said, been going on at least probably five or six years or more. The Village of Irvington, for the last couple of years, has been coordinating the bidding process, so we've assisted with accumulating all the requirements from the other villages. We put out the bid, received the bids, and you're being asked to evaluate the bids, which you have in front of you from our engineer. And only a relatively small portion of the dollars that are bid here are Village of Irvington expensed, so. Just so you recognize, it's a $3.5 million contract, and we're paving about $200,000 this year. So.
Who's the big one?
Hastings is doing a lot of work, and Eric's handling it as well. Maybe Ardsley is the other one. Ardsley and Hastings. So, there is a bit of a wrinkle here in the bids that were received. It's described in the resolution, but just to quickly give you an overview, the low bidder was some $500,000 lower than the second low bidder. The other bidders were in a similar range, except for, yeah, a similar range. The low bidder withdrew their bid. They claimed that they made a mistake, an error in the way they bid it, and they wanted to renegotiate, which we, the consortium did not agree to. So, we requested that they either honor the price, or it's considered withdrawn, and they didn't affirmatively honor the price. So, it's withdrawn. And so, the second low bidder is being recommended. Our engineers fully vetted them, and are satisfied with their bid.
The only other thing I'll add, Larry, is that over the years, the villages have saved, you know, millions of dollars by joint bidding. It was one of the, it's definitely not easy to coordinate it all, but we found that we have, you know, the same, or, you know, some have even better quality work, and, you know, significant savings. I mean, the first year, it was like jaw-dropping, almost.
Yeah. And, look, the village is only doing $200,000 of paving this year. To bid out a $200,000 contract, you wouldn't get the type of paving companies that we're getting here that do larger volumes and better prices, so.
And I do think, too, it's, I found, obviously, the price savings are the driver, but having the evaluation of six villages, very spot, kind of getting their input on it also. Like, you know, wish we had one road where, you know, it wasn't perfect, and I think that's been, it's been really interesting, you know, really valuable as well, even if it's not just, it's not just a dollar and cents, but it's also the kind of shared experience, you know. And so, I think it's been a, it's been a great example of what shared services can do.
So, the resolution tonight is to approve, is to award the bid to the second low bidder, as it turns out. We, you will also authorize the village to enter into a contract for our share of it, and of course, the other villages need to do the same and piggyback on the bid.
And the other thing I was surprised about, you know, back when we first started doing this five or six years ago, was the scheduling was not an issue. That was my biggest concern, was that, you know, we'd all want to have the second week in August, then we wouldn't be able to do it. But, it hasn't actually ever come to pass. That's really been an issue. There's been, you know, some times where, oh, you need another day or something, but it's not, it hasn't been, it's definitely, you know, the cost-benefit analysis is not even something to have to look at.
Yeah, and there are, there are certain times where certain villages on certain roads need to have things done at a certain time, and we put that information into the bid. But, you don't have a blanket statement. I mean, certainly Irvington's, we've, unless it's in a critically sensitive area that needs to be done while school's out, for example, like Dowsley, you know, that would be a perfect one to not do in October, you know. You know, just as an example, so. But, for the most part, we're, we can handle it pretty much any time of year up until the middle of November.
I think it's a compliment to all the villages, to their mayors and their administrators, that they're able to organize this and save everybody money and get quality service.
Whereas, the villages, the Village of Irvington is a cooperative relationship with the villages of Ardsley, Dowsbury, Elmsford, Hastings, and Tarrytown, has listed bids for the milling and resurfacing of various streets, adjusting manholes, and concrete curbing in the builds of Irvington and partner municipalities referenced above. And whereas a public notice for this project bid was duly advertised in the official newspaper on June 8, 2017. And whereas, at 11:00 a.m. on June 28, 2017, at Irvington Village Hall, all bids received were opened, as summarized below, as summarized below. And whereas, because PCI Industries Corporation would not honor the bid base amount in the bid opening, PCI Industries Corporation has withdrawn their bid. And whereas, after reviewing the remaining bids submitted, the Village of Irvington Village Administrator and Village Engineer conclude ELQ Industries Inc. is the lowest responsible bidder for the work based upon the award of a base bid. Whereas, following the unit values bid in the contract and the extended totals based upon the engineer's estimates of the work to be performed in the Village of Irvington, the value of the work is $202,235, with the balance of the contract value for work apportioned to the villages of Ardsley, Dowsbury, Elmsford, Hastings, and Tarrytown collectively summing to $3.523246.80 million. And whereas, in accordance with the contract, each partner municipality will separately authorize the contract and be responsible for payment of services performed within their respective municipality directly to the contractor. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Irvington hereby awards the contract for the work to be formed for the 2017 milling, resurfacing, and replacement of curbing on various streets in the Village of Irvington to ELQ Industries Inc. in accordance with their unit prices contained in the bid of June 28, 2017, for the work to be performed within the Village of Irvington and five other villages, and to authorize the Village Administrator to execute said contract.
I will make the motion. Can I have a second?
Read it again.
Certain part. Have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is authorizing submission of a grant application for the Hudson View Park culvert replacement.
Well, we are working on, and we'll be diving into the design of a replacement of a culvert under Hudson View Park, which is just off of East Sunnyside Lane. The project is a fairly complicated project in that it crosses underneath and over three pieces of private property, in addition to the village road. The project is estimated to be approximately $750,000, and we are pursuing a grant application in the amount of $300,000, so a little less than 50%, through the New York State Consolidated Funding Application Process, specifically a Climate Smart Communities Grant, which is, you know, looking, one of their parameters is widening of streams, culverts, that handle streams like this, in anticipation of larger flooding events in the future. That's the concept. And, you know, I'll be frank about it, it's a long shot, but we're gonna give it a try, and we'll learn from it, and we'll go back again if we have to.
And this is a project that's been in the thinking for, I don't know, I would say years, but.
Yeah, we had, we had $200,000 earmarked for it through the Community Development Block Grant Program, which was then lost as a result of the ongoing dispute between the county and the federal government. So, we're trying to replace that, and as, it's an important project to the neighborhood. This is, there's one way in and one way out to the Hudson View Park neighborhood, and this stream has had a propensity to flood and wash out the roadway.
Your question's.
Good project. Get it.
Whereas, the Village of Irvington is applying to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for a grant of the 2017 Climate Smart Communities Grant Program for a project entitled Hudson View Park Culvert Replacement in the Village of Irvington. And whereas, the grant application requires the applicant municipality obtain the approval and endorsement of the governing body in the municipality in which the project will be located. And whereas, cost estimates totaling $750,000 have been prepared for the project. And whereas, the village will provide a match equal to 60% of the total project cost, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby does authorize submission for an application for a $300,000 grant of the 2017 Climate Smart Communities Grant Program for the Hudson View Park Culvert Replacement Project, and, upon award of such request, commits to master grant with $450,000 in order to implement the project. And further resolved that the Village Administrator is hereby authorized to take any and all such steps that are necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution. I will make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We actually have a 12A, so if you're, you know, not ready to report, give me another eight seconds. This is a removal and appointment to the Route 9 Quarter Study Steering Committee. We were adding Leola, and we're taking off Mark, so. They're both in the room, which makes it exciting.
Have some cookies, you.
Leola actually raised her hand, and said she was very willing to attend these meetings for us. The other folks that are, actually, that were appointed, they're all super busy, not that they all is, but they were, they've been unable to attend the first couple of meetings, so we're glad that we have someone that has the time and desire to attend the meetings on our behalf, so. Thank you.
Thanks for stepping up.
Whereas, on August 15, 2016, Board of Trustees selected a committee to represent the Village of Irvington on the Route 9 Quarter Study Steering Committee. Now therefore be resolved to remove Mark Gililand as a member of this committee, and appoint Leola Speck. How do I show your last name?
Yeah, yeah.
As a member of the term to expire December 2017. I will make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Captain, are you against the mark? You want to stay on?
I guess I should have.
Reports of boards, standing committees, and officers, trustee liaison reports.
I don't have anything right now.
Got one of your artwork shares classroom.
That's a nice reflect.
Larry?
The Irvington Woods Committee will meet on Thursday, July 20th, at 7:00 p.m. in the O'Hara Nature Center. Day camp and teenscape are rolling along. Teenscape started session two already today, and camp season's almost half over, and enrollment in both is excellent. The Spray Pool in Memorial Park on Station Road is open Monday through Friday from 2:00 to 4:00. Park passes are required. Visit the Irvington Woods website, theirvingtonwoods.org. The O'Hara Nature Center Summer League is running, Monday through Thursday, and seeing the Hudson's starting at 6:00. Don't feed the geese. The Dogs on Leash Program continues. You can contact the Rec Department with any questions.
That's it?
That's it.
So, Larry, wonky. I noticed that there are kayak spaces available still, right, at Matheson? It looked like they're not filled, like they're only, you're.
Yes, well, I think the boat club has expanded their kayak availability, and spaces are still there.
So, that's good to know for people who might want that. I just noticed that. I would also, I mean, as the farmer's market is still functioning very successfully despite all the equipment that's parked. I was there on Sunday, as probably many of you were, and they're working around the tractors and earth-moving equipment, and it was still packed, and people seemed perfectly happy, so I'm glad they could work around that. Greg Nelson's DPW report is, they've been trimming around traffic signs, they've been actually replacing and adding traffic signs. They repaired a broken curb on South Buckout, a sinkhole on West Clinton. That sounds serious. They assisted the Parks Department with hauling material, and assisted the Water and Sewer Department with a broken sewer pipe on West Clinton, replaced a fire hydrant on Valley View Road, Cat Basins, and Crosswalk Painting. And the Water Department, as always, they're reading water meters, they do maintenance in the, in the summer of facilities. They jetted Roland Road Sewer, and there's a mention again of some of the same things. Jetted and videotaped sewer line on Lewis Road. That should be interesting. Jetted and videotaped a sewer line on Station Road in South Buckout. Fleet Pump performed maintenance on the legend Hollow Pump Station, and painting of fire hydrants. That's my report.
Just a point of interest, one of the reasons for clearing the foliage around the signs is because the court reported that people were contesting tickets because they couldn't read the signs. So, this is a wonderful example of village agencies working in tandem. The other report I had is from the Fire Department. In June, the Irvington Volunteer Firefighters responded to 28 calls for fire and rescue, 178 calls as of June 30th of the year. Department Training Tuesday, June 6, 20 Irvington firefighters encountered live smoke and fire conditions in the Burnet Simulator Building under the guidance of county instructors. The emphasis of the. The emphasis of the initial interior fire attack of search, search and rescue. Tarrytown firefighters also participated. Water rescue training on Tuesday, June 13th, 10 firefighters operated Marine 4 on Hudson River, conducted site survey of the new TZ project construction zone, and practiced boat operations for new members. Tuesday, June 20th, 17 firefighters along with Dowsbury continue to build on past training evolutions using live fire attack simulator at the county fire training center. Maintenance sets firefighter protective gear to continue to be sent out for professional cleaning and inspection. And other events, 13 firefighters attended, marched and won a trophy in the Hudson Valley Volunteer Firefighters Convention. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Village Administration Report.
Just a quick update on the town hall building. The storm windows are expected to be delivered Wednesday, and then over the course of the following two weeks or so, they'll be installed. And as they do install on either side of the building, the west side and the east side, the scaffolding will be removed. The front scaffolding will remain because there still are pieces of terracotta that are anticipated to come, certain key pieces, so they're doing everything they can do in waiting for the additional pieces. You know, timing overall is, there's, there's a chance everything could be done by the end of August, but I say that with some hesitation because some of the, you know, if there's one key piece of terracotta that doesn't come in quite right, that would delay things, so. Again, there are contractors doing a very good job keeping on top of that and organizing all that, but that's the current timing.
Thank you.
Is there anything, just in general, you might say about the Aqueduct Crossing project? I mean, everybody's noticing it, I think.
Yeah, you think?
I think.
They're, they have come out of the gate pretty quick, and, you know, we only have a two-week look ahead, and this is our second of our two weeks, and they'll, they're going to continue doing their site work. They're working as much as they possibly can next to the school parking lot while school's closed, and then they'll start moving over to the monument area. Also of note is on the southern end of the parking lot, which is the, the Aqueduct parking lot that the village owns, we are getting prices to repair and replace the guardrail, which is in poor condition. This is outside of the scope of the project, but still with some of the funds that are budgeted. We're also going to be doing some landscaping work at the very southern end of the parking lot to remove some of the overgrown brush that's there, to repair the handrail, and to improve some of the on-and-off experience of people walking from the Aqueduct down to Croton Place.
All right, the slip and slide?
Yeah, so there's a few other improvements that are happening, happening kind of simultaneously for all of us.
Have we decided what, what the crosswalk is going to be like as part of the Aqueduct Cross?
Yes, it's, Mark could draw it for you. Or I can show you a picture.
Is it raised or is it just different?
It's not, it's not raised, but it's brick. So, and the brick pattern is such that it's, there's, there's white lines going across the street, and then there's alternating red and white stripes going as the, as the pedestrian would go, and that's all done in a brick pattern. I'm sure I have a picture somewhere.
I'm sure I saw the picture.
Yes.
Village Clerk Treacher's Report.
Nothing changed.
Village Attorney's Report.
Nothing.
Public comment? Review of action items. Anyone have any? I didn't have any.
I think what an action item would be eat a cookie, right? Before you go?
Uh, no.
Take home a cookie.
I mean, I have a few notes to myself, and they're not, they're not action items.
Got to, got to get you this, Greg, got to get you the update to this, that's my action item.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?